Good evening, everyone. I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you would so allow, welcome to the City of Hartsville City Council Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of October Fourth Public Hearings on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to invite you to start off with an invocation delivered by Councilor Mack, if you would. We'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance and Civility Pledge. I invite you all to stand and pray in your faith as we pray.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us, the citizens of Hartsville, mayor, council, and all of our staff and administrators to come together in these hallowed halls to do what is best, what is just and fair, what is right and good for all the citizens of Hartsville. Father, you said in your word that if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek your face, Lord, then you will hear from heaven and heal our land. So, Father, we're asking you, we're seeking your face, and we're asking you in the name of Jesus to heal our land because of the evil that's going on. And we know that you will do what we ask you to do in your Holy Spirit and and we pray our continued protection and care, love and kindness that you show to us every morning. Protect us all, Lord, and whatever goes on, we know that you, in the end, will cause us to have the victory. These not a blessing but hasten thy name, son Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor Mack. I'll lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is saints, one nation, in this one
Finally, the Civility Pledge. I invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the stronger and more prosperous community by in the civic engagement, respect, and fairness of our citizens and by the solutions of a better and a brighter city. All right. I forgot to say welcome to all of our guests. Super glad to have all of you here. We will get to the presentations as soon as possible, as I know a few of you, including King Lion, have other places to be this evening. To that end, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the September ninth, twenty-five regular City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, so move second.
I have a motion and a second. If the discussion on the minutes changes. At three seconds, is that what you're? Hearing none, we will vote all those in favor of waiving the reading of and approving the minutes of the September ninth, twenty-five regular City Council meeting. Please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. And that brings us right on to our presentations. For the best and brightest, Mr. Manager, I believe, you were going to take lead on this one?
Yes. So, the best and brightest of the PD, we have not one but two employees who are recognized for their thirty-five under thirty-five. We're selected. We have Chastely Jenkins, Jones, Jenkins. She was Jones before. And Kendrick Robinson, who are both two of our exceptional, two directors. We have, of course, Director of Parks Recreation. Then we have our Grants, Administration, Finance, goodness gracious, a lot of things. But these two staff are recognized for being part of the Business-to-Business PD Business Best and Brightest of two thousand twenty-five. We're very honored to have two of our employees selected, and we want to recognize you guys. So if you guys would stand up and be applauded by all these wonderful people.
Two out of thirty-five for the entire PD?
That's right. So we're very excited. Congratulations.
Can y'all come to the left or, yeah, to the left a little bit? Be centered in front of us. Congratulations to you both. Very well deserved. Next, we have troop five twenty-three.
And she has her baby, so. Thank you, guys.
And now we have recognition for troop five twenty-three. I think I'll come down for this one.
Thank you, Brian.
Good to see some of you again. Well, it's my pleasure to present a proclamation in recognition of all the good work that y'all do. Whereas the nation of the Boy Scouts, mayor, is preparing the people to make up for their moral choices over the lifetime of stealing and losing values as scouts. And whereas more than a hundred years of programmed service, generations, leaders, and outstanding citizens are following girls and boys towards their interests or beauties, discover their talents, and youth play activities like hockey camp, volunteering. And whereas troop five-two-three, the last remaining Boy Scout troop in town, has simplified the core values of Boy Scouts, recommended by fatherhood, leadership, character development, and community service. And whereas this troop has consistently embodied the law and the principles of duty to bind country others itself. And whereas the achievements of troop five-three, who resume their service projects that have benefited our community, most recently to work at Law and Park where the fifteen Scouts and five leaders spent two days repairing the deck to allow it to be safely reopened in public use. I saw that today. Great work. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, State of South Carolina, in recognition of this troop's outstanding service, leadership and dedication, community betterment, do proudly hereby proclaim this month, October twenty-five, as Scout Troop Five Twenty-three Month. To call upon all of you to join and express appreciation to Scouts, leaders, and volunteers of troop five-two-three for their dedication to building character, strengthening community, and continuing the proud legacy of scouting and dog hunting. Congratulations to all of you. I look forward to seeing what you do next. I have a badge for each of you. If you would pass it to me down, I'll take the extra. This way, and we'll gather a photograph. Sent it to a leader and scout. I'll present it to both of you.
Well, all right. Time to smile for the photograph. Well, first of all, would you like to say anything?
It was, it was a pleasure. It was impetus behind this was the city needing some help and asked the troop, we wanted some community service hours. Cindy actually paid for the materials. We had several leaders who were contractors. We spent, it's actually more than two days, but several days out there. And refurbished the entire dock or the boardwalk at Law and Park. They got some good hours in and learned carpentry skills, how not to drop things in the water. In November.
Well, we appreciate it. First time that you've gone to Law and Park. And of course, this age, which your sister spearheaded in Murray Park. We appreciate all that you do for the city as a whole. If you would hold one side, we hold the other side. I didn't do any of this, y'all, but I'll let you hold the competition for. Thank you again very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you all, young men.
Thank you so much. They're always busy.
You say the last true.
Finally, welcome to the Hartsville Lions Club upfront. I would ask my favorite lion, Uncle Lion Barker, if he would come forward to accept this proclamation. All the members to come forward, if you would, were here in presence today. I want to thank King Lion, the president of the club, for jumping onto the mental health issue and having the Lions Club to do this today. Many of you know that this one's very important to me. Mental health has been an issue in my life and a lot of my friends' lives. I'll keep it brief as far as reading proclamation. Whereas World Mental Health Day is observed each year October tenth to raise awareness of mental health issues and mobilize efforts to support the mental well-being. And whereas the Hartsville Lions Club, a key global international mission, Lions Clubs to serve communities and improve quality of life, recognizes that mental health is essential to overall health of the being. Whereas the Lions Club of Hartsville is committed to fostering and expanding, producing stigma, supporting programs to encourage open dialogue about mental health challenges. And whereas the Hartsville Lions Club and City of Hartsville, joining communities worldwide and affirming that passion, education, and service are key to supporting individuals' advantage in return for better mental health. Whereas on this World Mental Health Day, let us intensify our efforts to create a world of mental health value protected and accessible to all. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim October tenth, twenty-five, as World Mental Health Day. And encourage all citizens to learn more about mental health, support local initiatives, and participate in community efforts to improve resilience and our commitment to all lions. But I'd like to ask my favorite lion, Uncle Lion Barker, to accept this amount of happen. Would anyone like to make some comments? King Lion, just to say thank you to the city for the opportunity, the city recognition. Your role. Thank you for all that you do. I'm honored to be a part of, part of the team. Anything else? Advice, comments, anything else?
Oh, yes. So, go back, like.
Thanks to all of the Lions Club for your observance and the work that you do to bring mental health awareness about. And I have asked, and I'm asking again, Mayor, City Manager, and Assistant City Manager. There has to be some type of flag that we can buy, just like when Southern five hundred, you know, the races are. Because so many people suffer mental health in silence and alone. And if we put flags out, then that brings the awareness to people. And they, you know, get a chance maybe to acknowledge something that they didn't know a family member had or them themselves had. So it's good in here, but we need to show it from the outside and see it.
And, and council, yeah, I was gonna say, we council wants, so, uh, next May will be, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month. And I believe that'd be a perfect time. This is just the day for it. We had to do, but that's a great idea for May, May, next May.
The flags would show to, to potential persons there.
Yes.
My next proclamation is for IV Week, and I believe we have several guests here for the National Backwater IV Week. Thank you for joining today. Uh, this is Whereas the Hartsville National Backwater Program is integral to the growth and longevity of the school and community. And whereas the strength of the Hartsville High School International Backwater Program is premier educational opportunity for students. And whereas the Hartsville High IV Program seeks to participate with the school, community, local community, and international community. And whereas the Hartsville High International Program promotes and encourages students to be caring, balanced, and active in their state to become their pride, Casey Hancock. Mayor of the City of Hartsville, do hereby proclaim the week of October thirteenth through seventeenth as the International Backwater Week. And the City of Hartsville asks all of you, citizens and educators, and students, to applaud this premier academic opportunity for our youth in Hartsville, and I'll take this opportunity for a round of applause.
Um, we're glad to be here. Uh, I'm glad to be here. These are two of our diploma candidates. They are completing basically their second year of, um, college in their senior year of high school. They are perfect candidates, and they represent what is right about public education. Usually Johnny Andrews, who served for decades on, um, city council, would ask the students to talk about, they would write about in their four thousand-word essay. And that is something that they have to present. So, Kason Grant, then is going to talk about what he's going to present. And it's something that they have to be passionate about. And then Hannah is going to also talk about what she is going to present.
My essay was on Um, my essay was on the Battle of the Nile, and specifically how Napoleon Bonaparte used the Battle of the Nile to become Emperor of France. So I, like, evaluated the loss and how he, um, traversed the pope reception of the loss to eventually become Emperor France.
Um, my essay is about the Chinese one child policy that happened during the late twentieth century. And, um, it's basically a research paper on all of the horrific tragedies that came with it.
Very interesting. If you would allow, it'd be so kind and would share your papers with, with us, so you can send them to the city clerk. I would love to read those. I think I speak for most of council when I say that. Well, should we take a photo? All right. Gather round.
Do you have some representatives from the Green Center here this evening for domestic violence awareness?
Whereas domestic violence is a serious social problem that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, law enforcement and court costs, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. Whereas only a coordinated community effort, that's the important part, will put a stop to this crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout our city and urge all of you to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our communities. And I would also ask that you join me in thanking the staff and volunteers who do the work of taking care of victims and prosecuting perpetrators and raising awareness of the horrible, horrible impacts of domestic violence. Thank you for all that you do, and I would invite you to make some comments if you like.
I would. I'm filling in. I work on the children's side, but that affects us as well. But I had some things, talking points that they sent me. Thursday is Wear Purple Day, um, to help raise domestic violence awareness. And they gave me a couple of statistics. In one year, just in the city of Hartsville, they, it worked with sixty-three different victims. That's families, victims, associated. I mean, just because it's one family, it affects everybody. One was an adult physical assault. Fifty-nine were domestic violence. Two were emotional abuse, and one was family violence. And then just to give you, for the county, there was one hundred and thirty-eight victims that they served in Darlington County. So this is unfortunately a, a big problem we need to work on. So, especially in Darlington County, and we won't even talk about the child stuff. I'll be back in April.
Thank you so much. Again, that's, that's more than one victim on average per week in a town the size of the Hartsville. So I'm honored to give this to you to thank, and thanks for what you do. If you would smile for a photograph with me. I think we're pretty much centered up here.
Local Chamber of Commerce Day. I know who's here for this one.
Well, thank you all for being here. Um, I will also try to keep this one brief, but congratulations at the same time. Whereas chambers of commerce strive to address the community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership. Leadership Hartsville here with us tonight. And innovative problem solving. Whereas chambers foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, enhance quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunity for all residents. And whereas chambers are champions of communities, serving as a trusted resource for businesses, residents, and other stakeholders. And whereas chambers create catalytic community partnerships to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. And whereas the Greater Hartsville Chamber of Commerce specifically, founded in nineteen-ten, is a membership-based organization that represents over four hundred and fifty businesses, nonprofits, and individuals that work together to make Hartsville the place we all love. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of this City of Hartsville in the State of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day. And call upon all of you to learn more about their local chamber, its impact, and support of local businesses, and how you can help them. So thank you for all that you do to support Hartsville, not only the businesses but the people. It's my honor to present this to you, and I would invite you to make any comments if you like.
I say enough all the time through my emails. So just, um, we'll see all the taste on Thursday.
Oh, the chamber girl, what? Thank you all so much.
This is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. And whereas South Carolina, where it's in South Carolina, approximately forty-five hundred women are diagnosed with breast cancer and five hundred and sixty die from the disease every year. And whereas the United States, there is a one-in-eight lifetime risk of developing breast cancer. And whereas breast cancer was the first most commonly diagnosed cancer and number two leading cause of death from fifteen to nineteen here in Darlington County. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, lungs, liver, and brain. And whereas routine breast cancer screening and follow-up testing helps find cancer early, when it can be most effectively treated and save lives. Whereas it is vital that those affected by breast cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and that research of all forms of breast cancer continues to be vigorously supported. And whereas being aware of the health information, education, treatment, and support methods available to help individuals and their families find and receive the appropriate care and resources they need to improve their quality of life. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as an opportunity to increase awareness of the disease and to encourage individuals to have a plan to detect the disease in the early stages. Key point. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of this great city of Hartsville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of October twenty-two to five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all citizens to support the fight against breast cancer and never be silent, as we keep winning and fighting until the fight is won. And I'll also ask you to thank the people like yourself that put in the hours to do that work. We appreciate what you do. You're very welcome. Take that, and I would invite you to make any comments if you'd like.
Yes. I want to let everyone know that I am from South Carolina Cancer Alliance, and we actually do statewide work, bringing awareness and bringing education so that everyone know that birth, early detection saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you again for all that you do. Um, now, let's smile for the camera. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Community Planning Month. Uh, anybody from the city want to come up and accept? There we go. Is Brenda here?
We got Brenda.
Okay. Well, Brandon, thank you for being here to accept this. Um, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas planners can help navigate this change with data-driven insights and expertise that provide better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses this month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use questions. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community and planners of this city of Hartsville and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of this great city of Hartsville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of October this month as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And if I don't say it enough, thank you so much to you and your staff for all that you do to help this make the city great.
I'll just say, the biggest thing we have going on right now is we're taking a deep dive into our zoning code to see where we can be better for our citizens and our businesses. Uh, planning commission meetings are last Monday of the month, five-thirty. We talk about some really great stuff. Come on out. And our offices are always open. Uh, any one of my staff are welcome to answer any of your questions regarding business or development here in the city.
Thank you again for everything you do. And also thank you to the Planning Commission for your volunteer service. Um, I think that the code review and update is going to be really beneficial for us. Now it's time for a photo. Um, this is for Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, um, to recognize Rubicon. Is anyone here from Rubicon? Oh, yeah, that's right. They're at their carnival. I wanted to mention, this is what the other, this is. Um, Rubicon is currently having a Halloween carnival tonight. It lasts until seven-thirty. I'm going to try to make this meeting wrap up as quick as possible. They have Paint a Pumpkin, Haunted House, Cake Wall, Bouncy House, a lot of fun activities for the whole family. That is at Five-Ten East Carolina, just on the other side of the Coker University. After we leave or you leave, I would encourage you to stop by if you can. Make this quick. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, whereas it imperative that visible, unified prevention, education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. Whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens and opportunities, the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. That means no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during this week or next week of October. And whereas the City of Hartsville commits to helping to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore, I, Mayor of this great city, State of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week. And encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention, education activities, not only during this week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free Hartsville by pledging a healthy me is drug-free. So thank you just broadly to Rubicon and all the people who work in this space for the work that you do to help keep our citizens away from addiction and the harms that it causes. And again, the carnival is tonight until seven-thirty at Rubicon. And I'll leave this here for us to get to. And again, the carnival is tonight until seven-thirty at Rubicon. And I'll leave this here for us to get to Rubicon later. We had no one sign up for public comment, which brings us.
Mayor, we have one presentation tonight.
Uh, the presentation before, yes. Um, Mr. Bearna, if you would come forward, I'm really excited to hear what you have for us tonight. I got you, Trip.
Good evening. Uh, I want to thank y'all for this opportunity to work with you, your staff. It's been a pleasure to work with and really enjoy this process. My name is Trip Bearna. I'm a master of architecture at GMC.
If you want to set the microphone, that'd be great so we could hear you and then he's asking to advance the slide.
Okay, there we go.
Just to give you the project goals, I've worked with staff to come up with these goals and it was really to create a plan. To address some existing issues, which I'll get into later, and then create a document that will aid in future grant funding opportunities. Just to start off with, I want to make everybody aware that these are, these plans are just beginning stages. Everybody do it now?
It's, it's really for the, for the live stream.
More analysis and studying and planning will be required. And a detailed design plan will be required to actually implement this plan, but this plan is generally a set document that will just aid in that grant. Project limits in the area that we studied were Carolina Avenue, Fourth and Sixth Street and then Fifth Street, Carolina to Old Avenue.
There we go.
Here's some existing conditions and you know, as we started the project, we evaluated these and you can see from these pictures here that the live oaks are, are beautiful trees and actually one of my favorites, but they haven't been given enough space to grow in, so you're having issues with, with leaves on the sidewalk. You can see where those roots are really coming up above the surface. And that in return has created trip hazards. There are also canopy encroachments and um, you know, the trees are gray in the right division, but you know, they're really struggling in their current conditions. Also noted that some of the sidewalks had very narrow lettering tones. Uh, there was a need for more lighting. Some of the, the planting areas actually were empty and I'm assuming that the plant material there had died, passed and just happened to be displaced. Also, we tried to address some of the stormwater runoff concern that Ian will need additional study, additional effort there to come up with solutions. But this is just a set overall plan to, to address these items. We had a business meeting where we met with the public and uh, this is just a list of summary of comments that we received from that meeting. No one seemed to lose parking and we can see several times that I've visited here that parking is premium, so no one wanted to really lose any parking areas to create new planning areas that give these trees bigger spaces for growth. So that was is our understanding that you guys have ample parking in the rear and outside of the streets there, but um, we heard, you know, it's very dark. People didn't know how to access that, so I think some parking programming and education on that, maybe some signage may help some of that to alleviate that part on the street. Get folks outside, let walk with that. There was some concern for some light pollution, particularly from the upper floors and uh, folks really wanted, you know, more planners along the streets.
This is light coming into the upper floors? Do you recall?
I think it was.
That would make the most sense, street lighting coming into the windows.
These are just the, the comments we've heard. This is, this is the current design. He had, um, worked with your staff. We had plenary conversation with D O P. Try to get their input just on the initial planning side. Basically determine the movement to maintain the existing curb line and retain the apartment of the street. So our plan here was shown, um, we, we created larger planning areas where possible. Also created areas that some of the stormwater runoff could potentially run into rain gardens. Depressed areas along the street that alleviates the flood. And I'll also have added additional light. And this is uh, this is the, uh, Carolina, we show here. And some of the same, same principles apply. Really just created consistent planning plan that created these larger areas. To help with all the concerns. This is a slide of more detailed area that um, shows both the tree plantings and potential ground cover areas. Some more amplification period of rainwater to probably alleviate some of that. Both trees grows and ground cover and provide supplies here and again, once we get into more design. Down the road, certainly. Try to use native species for good things that really survive the heat out of the bag. And hopefully have some cleaning. At this point, I'd love to take any question you guys may have, answer anything I can.
All right. Thank you very much. I would invite council to ask some questions if you have any before I run my mouth.
The trees that were listed are those suggested types of trees?
They are suggested species that do well in that growing condition. By no mean I'm saying these are absolutely influenced by the environment by several options. On the tree, we try to create, um, more than one species. Right now you have all live oaks, so general. Rule of thumb these days that really trying to get more species in an area to prevent that you have disease or problems. Or you have one tree that died, could be replaced and not affect the whole of the overall street and not pull planet.
Well, the variation in color is a potential.
Colors, so each one has a different attribute. Supporting all color. Trees handle stress, heat and all that.
So based on that design you presented, so the current tree is going to be uprooted and replaced?
Yes.
So replacement trees, you're gonna have really good consideration that the roof, the roof growth like downward. Would that be good?
Yeah, so a lot of them are also smaller varieties, which what you're having with the live oaks or you know, the canopies. Live oaks get massive. Y'all, y'all can see it, Charles. With the angle of it, you could potentially get forty, sixty, eighty, hundred foot wide.
Yeah. Would be less trees too, right?
You know, I did not count the number of existing.
Very similar.
Did you, but wherever we could create a planning area that was adequate space, we, we added trees. So I would assume that numbers probably around equal, maybe.
Yeah, cause I usually look downtown. Currently it's like the lighting.
Right.
So less trees, you'll be probably more chance of better lighting downtown.
Right.
Because on species of the trees.
Yes, sir. And in our lighting design, we included several different types of lighting, both standard pedestrian poles, old axles. Potentially some powder lights to affect the lighting at all of the different levels and how you maintain that canopy instead of providing lighting. Okay.
Thank you for the statement. You mentioned Sixth Street, but your design only show between this, this block here, Fourth and Fifth Street.
And, and that was the scope of this grant that we funded for and, and the, the point of this grant was to just look at. Was to look at the study area for downtown. And so we can adopt this strategy throughout the rest of the city. And to your point, we are not going to be, this is not the plan to ultimately pay to replace these trees. This was just a study area to figure out what we were doing with. The real situation is that these trees that are planted downtown were not exactly the right trees about twenty-five, twenty-eight years ago or so. Um, and they have about a twenty-five-year shelf life, if you want to call it that. Uh, we have done studies on, they are starting to um, deteriorate at the top. So these trees, we do start for a plan. And this is what this was doing was to idea of what we could do to replace these trees. As you can see, they are causing significant issues throughout the downtown. Uh, we're not having the same issues in other areas, for instance, like on Sixth Street, uh, but similar issues. So it was just a little bit different. The main thing here is that this is a grant-funded study to identify what we can do to seek for either future grant funding to go forward. Uh, so what Trip and his team did was they met with the businesses, talked about what was going on. Uh, get their input on everything, get some ideas for what trees would be beneficial for this area and not what we want to replace with, you know, something that might be future problems. But the real uh, issue is that this is a long-term plan. This is going to take years to do. Uh, the biggest thing out of this is that we cannot phase this plan. I was hoping to maybe thin out some of the trees as we go. We have to take down entire sections at once or if not the whole thing. Uh, because when we do this, it also is going to involve utility being moved, sidewalks being repaired, gutter work, stormwater. So this is a massive potential uh, project going forward. And this, what Trip and his team did was give us the foundation to do that. We might be five to ten years out for something that people can find the funding to do this. Cause every tree, and I believe how many, seventy-four trees downtown, have to be replaced at once. Uh, but it has to be done so we can make sure that we're protecting the future.
Question. Um, do you have like other cities that you have gone in and done this for and are able to show?
Yes, ma'am. We are, we have a lot of experience with streets throughout our, throughout the city.
Cause um, I know, I don't know why, but um, the Bradford pear tree, they're bad now. I, I don't know why, but I read that, that Bradford pear trees are not good trees to have.
Yes, ma'am. There's typically two problems with Bradford pears. Um, one smell you get. Two, they have a very weak branch structure. So we have, we have planted here a long time. Maybe good ideas are always that they don't fully know. One that I have, I've just had to take it all, um, and should I have any major issue?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything from the left, my left?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as like funding for this would go, would the recommendation be to go after grant funding to fund all of this in its entirety? Or us save up a little bit year after year after year that we also contribute out of the city's budget? I don't know what. Cause all I'm hearing are major dollar signs with us having to remove all of these other trees.
And that was my point. So um, I'll, I'll answer that Trip because uh, basically uh, yes, we always seek whenever we do any city project, grant funding from the state. Uh, we do, uh, we typically try to find, that was subtle, right? But um, we try to do grant funding as much as possible. That is actually part of our programming to seek as much grant funding as possible. Uh, this, this scale of project is in the millions. So yes, absolutely. It would make, be more beneficial for us to seek uh, funding for a one-time or maybe a phased approach. But it has to be something that can't be just bitten off a little at a time.
Well, and, and the, the design of the study, the, the study was designed to be eligible for grant funding from the job, which I appreciate, you know. A plan without, without a way to fund it is pretty much a, a, um, a doorstop. So we, we really appreciate that approach.
And I appreciate the presentation too. Thank you for putting that together for us.
Yeah, let's go.
Great work with y'all and I look forward to the future.
Absolutely. Anything else from the Goodness Club? All right. Well, thank you again. We look forward to talking to you more because this will be a long process.
Thank you.
Now would be the time where I would uh, ask anybody from public comment to come forward, but we didn't have anybody. Have we, anybody signed up in the meantime? All right, Mr. Manager, it is indeed your turn.
Okay. Uh, I have two, well, two things for you tonight. The first one is I wanted to go ahead and highlight, and I'm sure you guys have seen some people walk around downtown. Today, Hartsville was welcomed fifty-five professionals in the Main Street and Downtown Professional Development uh, area to Hartsville to showcase. We are the first city in South Carolina they have come to ever for Main Street America. So South Carolina, Hartsville played host today to fifty-five professionals as far away as Oregon to come down and do a transformational workshop for the city of Hartsville. They walked around, they met with businesses. Uh, we welcomed them this morning. We had a um, focus group. The mayor and I and staff participated in a focus group this afternoon. Then we also had a business focus group with them. And these, this group was quizzing us on what we see going on in Hartsville and what we want to do. That from that, they're going to provide a transformational reassessment for us. Not, it's not free charges, they had to pay for it, but we're getting this as a result of this thing. We're very excited. Hosted them today. Um, I can't thank enough our staff to put this together, our Main Street group, our tourism group. Uh, this was a really exciting thing for us to do. It was a really cool opportunity to showcase Hartsville and they, they chose us. Um, out of other cities, no harm, you know, no offense to other cities around here, but we were the city they chose in South Carolina.
And thanks to the Main Street South Carolina for helping with.
Absolutely. Yeah, Jenny Boer and her team are.
Really, really, really cool to, to meet with that group of people and they'll be back tomorrow, right?
They are, they do today, they did a whole day here and then they are going back. They're going to go to Columbia tomorrow.
Oh, okay. But they're still working on our.
Yep. And tomorrow they're going to be breaking down what they learned here today. So very exciting. So next.
Be a model for someone else.
We will be a model for someone else. That's right. That's the goal. Uh, next, as part of the master plan update, uh, we want to do quarterly reports. So this is the uh, next one we have coming up for you. We have had a slew of activity. Since the master plan was adopted, the whole point was to start immediately working on the things that were identified as key priorities within there. Some of the things that came out were of course focusing on housing, focusing on uh, business and the profession or business and housing development. As well as doing some connectivity across the city. We have already jumped right into all those projects. Right now we have a fourth, uh, from Fourth Street to Fourteenth Street is a multi-use path going in to make a walkable path. Connecting our city east to west, which has never been done before. Uh, for people going to Byerly Park, that's going to tie into a recently awarded Four Street sidewalks, which has been a long time coming. Uh, that's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant immediately, and it's going to be close to about a four-million-dollar grant by the time it's done. Uh, we also, at the same time, are making improvements to Fourth and Washington. Um, a group has donated land for a pedigree park. So we're going to make a pass at park right there where the two walking paths intersect to create another environment for our students, governor's school students who can now walk to school on a safe path. We're very excited about that. We also were involved in one of my most favorite projects since I've been here, which was the Marion Avenue Cemetery Project where we are, um, were able to encapsulate and protect the historic African-American cemetery within South Hartsville. Uh, this was a five-hundred-million-dollar, five-hundred-thousand-dollar project within South Hartsville to um, fully protect this cemetery, which is so meaningful to many community members throughout the city. We have a phase two already ongoing. We're doing s- ground sonar penetration to identify the, I think, close to five-hundred unmarked graves that are there. Um, I think three-hundred graves have already been identified and there's close to eight-hundred that they know of. So we're going to be doing ground penetration radars to find the graves and then we're going to be, the next phase is then to get placards and identify every single one of those through DNA tests. And so this is the legacy project for the city. It's amazing to have been part of. Um, we were able to work with our past senator, our current senator on funding for that. Uh, of course, past council members, uh, staff. It's just been a wonderful project to be involved with. Uh, we also.
If I may, I went by Marion Avenue Cemetery today and the Rose Garden looks really good for anybody from public services here tonight. Thank you all very much for, for making that look so great. I'm sorry for.
No, thanks for telling us, appreciate it. Next, we did, we saw recreation was a huge focus for us. The city of Hartsville has taken over recreation fully from, we used to work with the county with it, now the city has taken over fully. We are, Kendrick already left, but we are fully have every single registration full. So we have filled every single lame, or benchmark we set ourselves for, and we're looking at potentially adding as we go forward. So we're very excited about that.
It's amazing to do that in the first year. We all kind of expected there to be.
We thought there'd be growth pattern, but we, we beat our benchmarks day one.
And he had a game, that's why he left.
He did have a game.
Speaking of a successful program.
That's right, that's right. The next one was housing, which was a really critical factor here. Hartsville, of course, we are reaching a, you know, it's a bit of a bottleneck. We need more housing, not just of, you know, the suburban type housing, we need townhouses, we need apartments, we need housing of all types. Right now, we were just awarded through the partnership with Conley Development Group to have a sixty townhouse development developed on Sixth Street, or Eighth Street, rather. And that is a Lincoln Development Project, Conley Development's called Orchard Commons. That should be starting ground, or breaking ground, I believe, early part of next year. That in conjunction with two other housing projects that are in the works right now, we're looking at adding three figures worth of houses this next year. That is going to be transformational to the town. We are trying to add housing of all types, everyone, and we're talking from, you know, workforce housing all the way up to market rate. We need everything. So those are three developments that are in the works right now. And then finally, not finally, second, we have our adventure building was sold. As we all know, Adventure closed, we were very sad to see them go, but they had to make a choice about what they needed to do going forward for the organization. And we sold it to Firefly Gaming. We're very excited about that. They're, if you look in the store now, it is full of toys and games, it's going to have a pinball machines and all sorts of arcade machines. And it's going to be another fun asset for our families and friends to, you know, enjoy in the downtown area. That was all because city council decided they want to do something that was a little different than just selling it for essentially profit, but they sold it for market rate so they could make something important to have downtown.
The amount of inventory they have put in there is.
It is staggering. It is staggering.
I'm really excited for the grand opening. It can't be long, given the amount of inventory they put in there.
They have a soft opening, I think planned maybe later this month. And so follow them on Firefly Gaming, Firefly, let's see, is it Firefly Games? Yep. On their Facebook, they're posting constantly about what they're doing, so we're very excited to welcome to town. And lastly, one of the most critical factors is the city, how can we get out of the way of business? The biggest part about anything with city government is that we want to not be a roadblock for government and for growth, I mean. And so we are doing a huge, it's called a U D O, Unified Development Ordinance, to redo our entire zoning planning and zoning code to make it more friendly for businesses, make it more inviting for people trying to start a business, and also make it easier to navigate for anyone who's trying to look at what to do. This is a huge process. The Planning Commission is meeting monthly about it to undergo information, and then that will be part of our comprehensive plan update for 2025. This is a massive undertaking. Staff has really taken a lead on this. Thanks, Brandon, of course Sharon, for everything they've done. This includes enhanced strategic investment zones, new public use development ordinances, user-friendly developments, and then also we have, no, that's it, that's good. It's got a lot of stuff in there, so it's great. So we're very excited about everything that's going on with that and especially looking at things like our density to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to make sure that we're not hurting growth, but helping growth. And lastly, I have a little shout out to the chamber again. We're doing a lunch and learn in partnership with the chamber for our brownfields grant. This was another half a, half a million dollar grant that was designed to eliminate barriers to development by paying for remediation of brownfields, which is asbestos, contaminants in the soil. We are doing that right now. We have a lunch and learn in partnership with the chamber to get the word out. We already have several projects already being assessed right now and we want to be able to pay for that so that, it's federal government grant. We want to be able to pay for that so that it's not a roadblock to development.
Very good.
That's it for right now, but we're excited about everything going on and I plan to have even more for the next update.
That's all you've got?
That's it.
That's it.
We've been a little busy, but we're excited.
You mentioned the chamber, chamber, do you have anything going on this week? Yeah. It must be. Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations on selling out and thank you, Mr. Manager. Karen, do you have anything to add?
No.
Got a look on your face. Any questions for the manager? I will go ahead and say thank you once again for not only our department heads and their staff, but our volunteer committees as well for preparing your reports. For anybody doesn't, particularly in the public, doesn't know, we get forty or fifty pages of, of data each month that we consider to keep an eye on how things are, are going in the city. So that takes a lot of work to prepare those reports and I want to acknowledge that. That brings us on to the meat of the meeting. Unfinished business, item eight A, public hearing final reading of ordinance forty-four ninety-nine. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir. It's public hearing and final ordinance reading of forty-four ninety-nine, amending the business license ordinance of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty, to present this as an annual renewal of the class schedule that we have to do in accordance with the state law.
Again, it's something that we just do every year, own a schedule, right?
Yes, sir.
I would open, like to open the public hearing for ordinance forty-four, forty-nine. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address, name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. I don't see anybody jumping up, so I'll hereby close the public hearing. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance forty-four ninety-nine.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance forty-four ninety-nine, I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. There's any discussion on this ordinance before we move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this include any increases?
Mr. Manager, I'll keep that over to you.
We yield to the senator in a bit. It really just depends on the class that the business is in.
Okay.
We, we are not doing any rate increases, but depending on where the classes are moving, they could determine.
There's, there's a good bit of adjustment, they kind of true it up.
I just need, I just need to make sure.
Yeah, you wanted to state that for the record.
And as you recall, this is a standardization of a business license across every city in South Carolina. So we have the, they, they determine a agreed upon class schedule for every different rate or schedule of different businesses, so industrial, commercial, and that changes every year.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Anything else from council?
Daniel, does this include maybe any language as far as what's required on business license for business to apply?
This just, this just includes the schedule for what they're doing. We already adopted what there's required for a business to apply for a business license. And again, that is the same if you go to Bishopville, Veniceville, Columbia, it's all the same procedure and process going forward.
Because now as a city, even though we, we go by what the state says, we can add, change, modify, as long as it doesn't bother their language?
I'd have to see exactly it's what that would mean. I believe we, we adopted the standardization across the board, so I don't believe we can make many changes. Limited at best, yeah. But I'll check up on it. I'm not quite sure if there's anything we can tweak a little bit within it to make it stricter, for instance, but I necessarily don't think we have any incentive to do that.
Okay. Anything else from council? Thank you. Well, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four ninety-nine as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The guys have it, ordinance forty-four ninety-nine passes. Now open the public hearing for ordinance forty-five, well, actually, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record, then I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. It's public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-five hundred, an ordinance to lease the property on the corner of Marlboro Avenue and Seventh Street, the Hartsville Rescue Squad. To present, as you recall, this was the subject of a few conversations. Ultimately, the kind of agreement we were trying to help facilitate between the two parties did not work out. However, when talking with the Hartsville Rescue Squad, they provide a service to multiple agencies throughout Hartsville and the PD especially. And so we feel that they do need another year at least, and we can look at, again, removing or continuing to lease this to them, but we fully recommend moving forward with it.
Any questions or comments from council on this ordinance? Wait, no, I need to open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. I am now honored to open the public hearing for ordinance forty-five hundred. If anyone would come to, like to come speak on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. Again, no one leaping forward, so I will now close the public hearing, ordinance forty-five hundred. And before we have questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-five hundred.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved it, we pass ordinance forty-five hundred.
Thank you, Counselor. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a couple of seconds. Now, does anybody on council have any questions or comments? I, again, as I said last month, you really threaded the needle on finding a solution that, that makes it work for every party involved, so I appreciate that. I'm not sure how you did it.
Well, but ultimately, they decided not to do it, despite all my wonderful efforts.
Anyway, we have a.
But there, everything's okay.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I mean. So anything else from council? All right, well, hearing none, we'll take a vote since we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-five hundred, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The guys have it. Ordinance passes. And that brings us on to new business, resolution ten twenty-five oh one. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir. Resolution ten twenty-five oh one, changing the date of the Tuesday, November eleventh to twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. To present, that falls on Veterans Day, we are looking to change it to that Monday, the tenth.
Great.
At the same time, five thirty here.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution ten twenty-five oh one?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Is there any discussion on this? I will note that while quote unquote city offices are closed, a bunch of our staff will be hard at work getting ready for the Veterans Day ceremony that happens on Tuesday, November eleventh, and would encourage as many of you as possible to attend that, even though we won't be meeting that night. And thank you in advance to the city staff for making that happen. It's always a nice, well, experience has always been a nice ceremony. And now I'll shut my trap and offer any opportunity for anybody else in council to comment. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution ten twenty-five oh one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it, resolution moves forward. Now, we are to the point of executive session, I have to read this verbatim. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to C code for section thirty-four seventy-eight one, for discussion of performance to various city boards, committees and commissions, and appointment to the Housing Authority of Hartsville Board. Do I have such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.